All right, I would like to call to order the Tuesday, May 25th, 2021 Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting. It's a regular meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board. If you're able, please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as we get started here, I want to read our meeting notice. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home, the guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they're speaking. School board members wishing to speak should raise their hand and then wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call, and each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded, and access to this recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. Well, thank you for tuning in tonight. If you're watching from home, we're excited that you can join us and hear what's happening in our schools. Laura, would you please begin with a roll call?
Grandland.
Here.
A Samurai. Mueller.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Palmer, here, and Superintendent Stenbik.
Here.
All right, thank you. We will go on to our mission statement, which is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We are going to start the night by talking about our Highlander highlights, and we're going to honor our Athena winner and our Oscar Ang winners. And before I turn it over to Mr. Henderson, I would like to read to you a little bit about what these awards are, and then he's going to tell you a little bit more about each of these students. All right, so the Athena Award is Columbia Heights School, the winner is Columbia Heights High School Senior Allison Reynolds. Is the 2021 recipient of the Athena Award. The Athena Award is given to the best all-around female athlete at Columbia Heights High School each year. Nominations are solicited from head coaches and administration. Athletes usually compete in more than one sport, have made significant contributions both on and off the field. Winners display athleticism, competitive edge, academic focus, and community involvement. Then there is the Oscar Ang Award. And Oscar Ang was a longtime educator and administrator for the Columbia Heights High School District for three decades. He served as an assistant principal for years and was the first athletic director at Columbia Heights High School. In his honor, the 2021 Oscar Ang Award presented to William Ketchmark is given to a student athlete who has exemplified hard work and effort, not only on the athletic court, mat, or pool, but also in the classroom. The recipient is a senior male athlete who has excelled in effort and attitude, working toward achieving the best that he can. All right.
I saw Ellie on here. She might even be on a softball busk on her way back to Columbia Heights. It's possible. I have not seen Willie on here yet. But two very deserving, very deserving people. Number one, Ellie, she's been a great student athlete on both our soccer and our softball teams. She was all-conference recipient and section award winner in 2019 softball season, and she's having another great season behind the plate this year. In addition to her on-field accomplishments, she is also a leader not only in athletics, but she has led in our theater programs as well. She's very deserving of this award, and congratulations, Ellie. And for Willie, Willie Ketchmark, he embodies Columbia Heights pride. He's been a leader on our football team, our wrestling and track and field teams. And Willie received All District and Why We Play Awards in football this year and All-Conference in wrestling. He also took fifth in his weight class at the preliminary state tournament this year. And in addition, Willie cheers on all Highlander activities. I'm pretty sure he attended every single event held here at Columbia Heights that I would let him into during this COVID year. Basketball, all basketball games, he was at the musical last weekend. So he's an incredibly hard worker and very deserving of this award as well. So congratulations to them both.
All right, thanks for sharing that. I have seen both of them play, and I was really impressed with the hard work and attitude. Ellie, do you mind saying a few words?
Well, it was kind of surprising to get the award, and it definitely encouraged me to try harder this softball season. But it's been fun. I was nominated captain for softball this year. I was soccer captain for two years. And it's honestly been a blast for both of them, even when like the games are like rough. People always have really good attitudes, and we can turn around and just have fun, even if it's not going exactly how we would hope it would go. But it's a really big honor to have gotten these awards, so thank you guys all so much.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
I do.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you, Natty. I just want to say to both of you, congratulations. It has truly been a privilege to watch both of you go through these high school years. You guys have handled a lot of this with a lot more grace than I could have imagined doing myself. And your leadership, your character, all of the things that you bring to Columbia Heights High School, we're going to miss it, but we're so thankful, and we wish you all the best. So congratulations, both of you.
Thanks, Molly. Mary?
You know, echoing Molly's statements, thank you so much for all of the hard work you have put in, and you both absolutely deserve these awards. And yeah, thank you for everything, and can't wait to see what else you do.
Yeah, what a crazy senior year. Thanks for competing and representing our schools in your events. I do have these certificates that will somehow make their way home to y'all. So there you have it. I wish we could stand up here and take your picture with me. Just imagine. There it is. So we'll send those home and get those home to you, so congrats, guys. Mr. Henderson, thanks for leading our activities department. We appreciate you as well.
Thanks.
All right, we will move on to something less exciting. This is always the, you know, the drop-off after the Highlander highlights. Let's move on to the agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. But we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura, second.
Second.
Molly? Thanks, Molly. Discussion on the agenda. All right, roll call vote, please, Laura.
Grandland. Aye. Mueller.
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll go on then to the announcements, and you'll see that May 31st, on Monday, there's no school. On June 8th, which is a Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there is a regular school board meeting here in the community room and via electronic means. June 10th is the last day of school for students. On June 15th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there'll be a regular, or be a school board work session here in the community room and via electronic means. June 22nd, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, is a regular school board meeting in the community room and via electronic means. Correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, do we have any correspondence tonight?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
All right, excellent. We'll move on to communication to the board. And at this time, we'll start with the citizens and employee representatives. And at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action on this meeting or request presented at this time. And since I do not see anyone here, we will keep going. And we will move on to the consent agenda, which contains the personnel report. Can I get a motion to move forward with the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, that's Molly.
Second, Lorian.
Lorian, any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll do the roll call.
Grandland.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, motion carries. We're going to move on to another fun part, the acknowledgements of contributions. And I'll read it, and then I'll ask for a motion after I read the whole resolution. All right, where's Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district requests, donations, or gifts for any purpose, any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the peoples thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation, contribution, the school board accepts with appreciation, the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $16,441. So detailed background in monetary donations. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund. PEO Chapter EZ, $300. Quanis Club of Columbia Heights and Fridley, $2,000. Cott Family Foundation, $1,750. Heights Next, $500. Malcolm Watson, $2,000. Karma Day, $250. Diane Scully, $100. Mr. and Mrs. William Keether, $5,000. Robin Rice, $25. Jean and Robert Richardson, $100. Laura Martenson, $95. Jeanette Marr, $20, or $20. Mary Williams, $20. Nellie Gutierrez, $20. Laura Carstens, $25. Michelle Roden-Mocker, $100. Joy Balicius, there it is, $50. Kara Hoagland, $15. Arian Storm, $20. Kathy Anderson, $20. Michelle Lunder, $25. Crystal Doherty, $25. Regina Sloy, $100. Angela Knoll, $20. Jennifer Blake, $40. Amber Young, $25. Philip Doherty, $100. Billy Servio, $40. Matthew Keesley, $50. Callie Ite, $20. Karissa Orne, $40. Sarah Met, oh, you told me how to say this one, too. Madasovik, $25. Emily Hines, $50. Stephanie Vang, $20. Cheryl Felling, $25. And Anonymous, $1,226. A donation of books was made to Valley View Elementary by Linda Tilton for staff needs. Estimated value, $2,200. For total fiscal year 2021 monetary contributions to date of $127,524.60. I'm going to reread that just because I might have flopped some of those numbers around. Do I have a motion to move that forward?
So moved. Grandland.
Mary, okay, second?
Second. Palmer.
Palmer. Laura, thank you. Any discussion on that? Laura?
As always, I mean, I really cannot express the gratitude that I feel for this community and their support of our students. I hear all the staff, you know, I know the teachers and, you know, former teachers in there and community members, and we're just really, really grateful, especially in times like these.
I see Mary's hand up.
I'm using the
Thank you.
Raise your hand tool in the board book. Yes, huge, huge thank you to our community and all of the folks in it. It is so wonderful and helpful to the kids and the staff. And, you know, we're really, really lucky to be in a community that cares this much about the kids and so often. And yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty amazing to see. So it's always, it always warms my heart when we get to this part.
Yeah, great. Thank you to everyone. I see all the names and even Anonymous, whoever you are, whoever you are collectively. Thankful for that donation, for thinking of our kids and the scholarship fund, how exciting it is to, I know the academic awards ceremony happened last week? Was that early last week, or is that two weeks ago? Two weeks ago now, I think. Two weeks ago. And it's excellent to see all the seniors headed off into the world. Other comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Grandland.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, resolution passes. We'll move on to discussions, reports, and information items, and we'll start with reports from members of the board. And I always pre-make the list, so I don't skip anyone. And right now, it's Lorian. Lorian, you're first.
Great, thanks. Since our last meeting, I had the opportunity to take in a couple more baseball games. Also, attended two of our board training sessions that we've had. Attended the chair meeting last week. I had the opportunity to be at the powwow this weekend, and what just an amazing, awesome experience that was. So that was incredible. I know it was a lot of work, but having it out on the football field was awesome, too. So thank you for that and for the team. From there, I actually went to the Columbia Academy Columbia Heights Musical Wizard of Oz. I thought they just did a great job, and it was so fun to see them perform and to be in that great performing arts space. So that was really wonderful, too. It was a great, fun-filled weekend. And then just prior to this meeting, I was at the synchronized swimming end-of-the-season show, so that was fun. It was the first time we were able to see any synchronized swim events in person. So it was just our home team doing their end-of-the-season show. The great news is, it is not the end of the season. So our synchronized swim team is sending six girls to state this weekend. So we're very excited for them to have this great opportunity. I don't know the last time we sent six women to state for synchronized swimming, so that's pretty exciting. So that's it for me.
All right, that's great news. Molly?
Thanks, Natty. I had the opportunity to view the academic awards tonight. I'm pretty sure that was since our last meeting. And that was, it was done really well, virtually. It was nice to see all of the students, their accomplishments, and the awards that we have just talked about, that were given out to our students. It's incredible. Also attended the musical and two of the school board trainings that we did, and some middle school and high school track meets. I was, unfortunately, had a family commitment, so not able to attend the powwow, but I heard from so many people how wonderful it was, and so just kudos to everyone that put that on. I also had several conversations with parents of students in our district, so thank you.
Thanks, Molly. Laura?
Well, I attended the two training sessions last week and the week before, so I'm looking forward to seeing where we grow with that. That's pretty much it for me.
All right, great. Thank you. Mary?
I also attended the virtual academic award ceremony, which was pretty fantastic. So exciting to see all of the students and again, the wonderful community that we have, supporting them, and also to see where they're going to go and what their plans are for the future, which is pretty, you know, it's a great time of year when we get to sort of remember what it was like. I had a chance to speak with Superintendent Stenbik last week about the community engagement session, which I'm happy to report that a majority of the questions that were asked at that meeting were already in the process of being addressed. I think most notably, the vaccination clinic for the community. There was a couple of questions about whether or not we were going to do something like that, especially targeting our student population with the vaccine going down from 12, down to 12 years old. Like the other board members, I also attended the meetings with Dr. Mohammed, which have been fantastic. And I think we could go for hours if he had the time. I was able to attend the powwow, and I had an opportunity to connect with Senator Kunesh and Representative Feist. I also spoke with a number of caregivers, students, and staff as we come up on the end of the year, so it's been a busy week.
All right, thank you. I was able to attend, along with Superintendent Stenbik, the Association of Metropolitan School District Board Meeting yesterday, last Friday. And we talked through a fairly light agenda, but also what the state government is up to right now is the big topic. And Athena did include information on that in your board packet. But right now, it's a lot of guessing, I think would be my update. They're doing a lot of guessing as the, it looks like they're going into extra innings, as they would, we would say it in the house, or in the Severson household. The legislature is going into extra innings, and then we'll know more. Hopefully by mid-June was what they're predicting. Things should be solidified in terms of what will be coming the school district's way from the state. They gave us some, four different projections, or three or four different projections on what it could be, but it's all conjecture at this point, so there's not, no really huge update besides TBD. I also attended the two board trainings and have enjoyed them. Went to two chair meetings, attended softball game, was, and was also able to attend the musical in the new PAC, which was so fun to watch and see that actually get used and to see how despite a pandemic, the middle school and the high school could come together and put on a really fun production, which it was just fun to see the kids up there. And they were, even with masks, they were giving it their all, and you could tell that their characters were up to. It's an extra challenge, I suppose, to act in a face mask, but they seem to be up to the challenge. And that will conclude my update, so I'll turn it over to Superintendent Stenbik for her report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The district received new COVID relief funding to support robust summer programming for early childhood through grade 12. So we're working on putting the, you know, putting all the new funding online items, and it will really greatly help with the plans for academic acceleration that we have for this summer. Columbia Heights Public School staff are in the process of completing an Equometrics survey. So this tool will provide baseline data in nine categories and will help us pinpoint the areas needing improvement. And over the weekend, as mentioned previously, I also was able to attend two great events. Columbia Heights Public Schools powwow on Saturday. It really was a beautiful day, and our graduates were honored with an eagle feather ceremony. And then on Sunday, I also really enjoyed the Columbia Academy and Columbia Heights High School Joint Spring Musical of Wizard of Oz. Enjoyed being in the newly upgraded Performing Arts Center as well. It's just truly top-notch. And I want to thank the city of Columbia Heights, Anoka County Public Health, Dr. John Fry, and our nurse Nicole for organizing the vaccination clinic last week at the Highlander Center for ages 12 and up. The vaccinators were able to provide over 400 doses. So that was incredible. It was amazing to go down and see students and parents and community members coming on in for their shot. And I also had conversations with Chair Severson, Vice Chair Mueller, Member Lewis, and Member Grandland, and I thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you. Exciting times. Here we have a lot of fun things to celebrate, but we're going to move on next to the Employee of the Year, and I'd like to welcome Director Bennett to tell us more about that.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce our 2020, 2021 Employee of the Year. Disa Faebek is our Research and Assessment Coordinator up in Teaching and Learning. She's been with the district since 2016. Before she says a few words, Assistant Principal Kulik, who nominated her, is going to read his nomination first.
Good evening, everybody. I'll get right to the guts of it here. Disa has exemplified what a strong work ethic really is. She has been available 24/7 to answer or help remedy any problems. When Disa comes to assist or lead a meeting, her demeanor and overall outlook on school is positive plus. Disa has welcomed assisting any staff member with Zoom meetings, preparing for testing, and helping with professional development. I cannot say enough of how great Disa has been coming through when all seems futile or lost. She has positively approached situations with a glass-half-full attitude. Even when things are going smoothly, Disa will follow up with everyone to continue supporting their endeavors. She has covered the entire district with her help from pre-K to the high school. There has not been a rock that she has not polished to shine blue and gold. From an admin perspective, Disa has never belittled or made you feel like you were lacking in skill. She has a calm presence that makes the most stressful situations seem trivial. There is not enough space or time to tell of all the great things Disa has done for this district, and that is why I nominated Disa.
I was wondering if you're going to turn that camera on?
Wiping away some of the gratitude tears there. Thank you, John. Thank you. So my first reaction when I heard that I was selected as Employee of the Year was of gratitude. And this past year, as we know, has required some extreme flexibility and collaboration district-wide, and I'm very grateful for the variety of staff I get to work with daily. Columbia Heights Public Schools has some of the most creative and collaborative, solution-seeking people I have ever worked with. I am grateful that our student and family voices are included in our decision-making. I am grateful that our educators utilize a variety of data to ensure students thrive academically. And I am grateful that our beautifully diverse student body is celebrated by our staff and our students. And of course, I have to extend my gratitude to my amazing teaching and learning team, whose support has been continual throughout the years. And finally, I want to thank Superintendent Stenbik for her clear focus and her leadership as we truly strive for excellence and equity and access for each and every learner. So thank you. This is such an honor.
Well, thank you for joining us tonight. We're so excited to have the Employee of the Year here with us. I see the, maybe, I, you, oh, you can see them right here. These are the, oh, that's the superintendents. Where's the, oh, Employee of the Year is over here. Sorry. It'll be fun to see the new photos be added to the walls. Oh, Employee of the Year, these are teachers. Okay, now I'm with you. There's so many, there's so many awards here. That's excellent. We're thankful for you and your service. Other board members, do you have things you'd like to add? There it is, Molly.
Oh, I think Lorian was going to go first.
Oh, Lorian.
All right, I physically raised my hand on that one. Congratulations. I just, it's, it's great to hear, and knowing that our staff and teachers had the support of someone who's so committed to their success as well as the success of the students is amazing. So thank you for all of your efforts.
And then Molly?
Yeah, absolutely. I guess I'm a little bit hesitant to speak after both of you just spoke so eloquently. Mr. Kulik, that was well-written, and I appreciate you nominating her and acknowledging all of that work that is truly the heart of what we're trying to do in this district. So congratulations, well-deserved, and thank you for everything that you do.
All right, well, Disa, thanks for joining us tonight. Congratulations and looking forward to another great year. All right, we will move on to Director Tuckroll and the Every Student Succeeds Act grants.
Does that screen sharing is disabled? I can talk my way through, but you might not enjoy it as much. There we go.
There we go.
Where's that? Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. As Chair Severson said earlier, it's hard to follow. It's hard to follow after Disa's presentation, but an honor to work with her in the district. So I'm here tonight. Each year, we share about our Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, funding that we receive, which are our Title I, II, III, and IV, are our preliminary allocations for fiscal year '22, which is next school year. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed, and really encompassing our core values of excellence, collaboration, integrity, and innovation as we think about the funding. Here tonight is an informational item, but as in previous years, I'll be back again on June 8th to seek approval of our preliminary ESSA Title Funding Plan for the next school year. So we're going to begin with Title I. And Title I is really focused in on providing the opportunity to obtain a high-quality education and is focused in on academic achievement and supporting success of students. For all of the different titles, our key activities are determined by a variety of stakeholders, including school and district staff members, families, teachers, students. Our key activities for Title I for next school year will include many similar ones as past school years to really look at academic support. We're going to focus in on our math and reading intervention, providing supplemental materials, and instructional leadership support. A required piece of Title I is family engagement. So some of the funding is used to support family engagement activities at each of our different schools, as well as district-wide and resources. Another required set aside are for students who are experiencing homelessness or are in foster care. So we work with our student support team to determine what supplies, materials, needs our students have that we can use some of the funding to support. And we tend to allocate more than the required amount there to ensure we're able to support all of our students. The last piece on each of the titles you'll notice is the non-public mandatory support. We are required to offer title funding to our non-public schools in the district. And in our school district, we have Little Voyager's Montessori as well as Immaculate Conception, which both take pieces of different titles. Our projection for next school year for FY '22, our initial allocation is almost $850,000. And what happens is they give you an initial allocation. And then after all the different districts have decided whether or not they're taking it, our allocation might change. And as you'll see on the right, we had an initial allocation for last school year, for this school year, as well as a final allocation. So our number might change. In Title I, we're able to carry over 15% of our allocation, which we try to keep doing, so we have the funds available. And really the focus of our funds are staffing. We try to support our academics through supporting with teachers, with instructional staff, with administrative in terms of supporting instruction. So our licensed and nonlicensed staff take up the majority of our funding, as well as materials, which includes technology programs for some of those. And then there you'll see our family involvement set aside, as well as our homeless and foster care supplemental support. And then down at the bottom, you'll see the non-public estimate. We use the Department of Education formula to determine what that number is. But each year we are required to support our non-public schools who would like that funding. The next title is Title II, and Title II is staff development. So supporting academic achievement through improving teacher and principal quality. And our key activities for Title II include coaching as well as mentorship. We have a strong mentorship program in Columbia Heights is supported through here. And then a large amount of it is supporting professional development sessions and consultants. And then our non-public mandatory support. So our preliminary allocation for next school year is almost $125,000. And once again, quite a bit is spent on staffing, as well as at conferences and consultants. Title III is focused in on our multilingual learners. With over 30% of our student body, multilingual learners, this funding helps support supplemental programming to support academic achievement and English language development. So our key activities for Title III include teacher support, coordination of our EL programming, as well as staff development, supplemental language support, which includes materials, family involvement, which includes a portion of our cultural liaison salary, and then our non-public mandatory support. This school year, our initial allocation is a little higher than it was last school year, so it's almost $130,000. And the majority of it is going towards salaries and benefits, as well as some set aside for family involvement and materials. And our last title is Title IV. And Title IV has three different areas it focuses in on. One is a well-rounded education. One is to support safe and healthy students. And the last one is technology integration. Our key activities for Title IV under well-rounded include supporting accelerated learning and STEM. For safe and healthy, we support our physical education and health education, as well as social-emotional learning, including restorative practices. And then for technology, we really support with the professional development and professional learning tools. And Title IV is a little different than the other titles in which it gives a certain percentage that has to be spent in each area. So our preliminary allocation is about $55,000, which is a little less than last year's initial allocation. And underneath, you'll notice a well-rounded education, we have to spend at least 20% of the funding on that, at least 20% on safe and healthy, and less than 15 on technology. And then we have our non-public required set aside in there too. I will be returning on June 8th seeking approval of the preliminary ESSA Title Funding for the 2021-2022 school year.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? That must be a very thorough presentation. Thank you, Director Tuckroll. I don't see any hands or any questions. I know this is something we're used to seeing every year, but I know it takes a lot of time and these grants are very time-consuming. And you have to be a highly qualified person, as I've learned all of the kind of ins and outs of the rules. And am I correct on the Superintendent Stenvik?
I believe that's the next presentation, yes.
Yeah, oh, that's right. We're going into the LEA Authorization next. But I appreciate all your hard work. I think if you're watching this at home, it might be easy to just say like, okay, yeah, we did some percentages. But grants are not that easy. If there's anything I've learned on this school board is grants are not that easy. We thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right, and this will be back on June 8th as an action item.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Hearing no discussion or no hand raises, we'll move on to the LEA Authorization, and that's also Director Tuckroll.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. For this one, I do not have a slideshow, as it really is a short presentation and one that we go through every year. And as Chair Severson mentioned, one that we need to in terms of looking at the title funding. So each year, the Board of Education of Columbia Heights Public Schools must authorize personnel at a monthly meeting to act as a local education agency representative, LEA. The LEA representative ensures the school district maintains compliance with the appropriate federal statutes, regulations, and procedures, and acts as a responsible authority in all matters relating to the review and administration of the Title I, II, III, and IV plans. The recommendation is that myself, Tara Tuckroll, be the LEA representative for the 2021-2022 school year. And this is an informational item, and I'll be back on June 8th seeking approval.
All right, any questions on that? All right, well, we thank you for your time and for your presentations, and we'll see you back at our next regular meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, have a good night. All right, we'll move on to the National School Board Association, our NSBA membership. If you're in Board Book, you're going to see the invoice attached, and this one's me, so I'll go ahead and read. The, the board will present it with information on the NSBA membership. The NSBA membership, I'm trying to get the document to load with the numbers, sorry. I'm not having a lot of luck here.
You have to expand it.
I have to expand it?
Yeah, expand your window.
Expand my window.
Because sometimes I can't get it to load unless my window is bigger.
You, it was up. You had it up there, Madam Chair.
You know what I have? I bet I have it right here in my board packet. I'll go Paper. Here we go. Thank you, Don. All right. It's time to consider the renewal of the National School Board Association affiliated membership dues for the 2021-2022 school year. The 2020-2021 pricing for the school year was $4,165. And the National School Board Membership, Association Membership for this year, this coming year, will be the same at $4,165. The invoice is also attached in your board packet. Any discussion on this? This will come back for a vote on June 8th also. So any discussion on this? Laura.
I'll just make a comment. I, I have to admit that more and more I am going to, the resources that the school, the National School Board Association has been providing, I found it especially in this past year, so much more important, especially with how many new experiments are being tried throughout the country and, you know, different voices being heard and just being able to coordinate all of that, you know, in the, to the benefit of education, students and, you know, communities. So in years past, I've always wondered whether or not this was a needless expense. But I, I confess this year, I don't think I could have been able to navigate quite as well without their, without the different resources that are available.
Thanks. Mary, I see your digital hand there.
Thank you. So I think, you know, being new on the board, it's been helpful to have. I also wonder if it would be possible to sort of get in our, in our communication this week, what, like what exactly this, what we all get for being a member of NASB? The NSBA, sorry. And also if there are any other organizations that do similar work, just to see comparison. I think one of the things that I'm always thoughtful about is what are we getting for money? And also like, although I'm not saying it's not, it wasn't helpful, I do think it's helpful, but I think it's always important to sort of question those things, if that makes sense.
I missed that last sentence. I'm sorry. What'd you say?
I just think it's helpful to always question and make sure, like, does this continue to be, you know, a good use of our money? Is there something else that's different that might also provide similar but differing information? Just sort of exploring what else is out there.
I think it's 49 of the 50 states. Is that what our, is that the stat in the union? All but California are, their state associations are partnered with this national organization. And this is, Lori and I see your hand there, so just a minute. This has been like some, a recurring question we've asked every year is wanting to make sure we're spending the school district's money wisely. Because you, you know, some, some people might look like in light of our budget, $4,100, not that much. Or you might say $4,100 is an awful lot of money. And, you know, both are true. And they're from whatever lens you're looking for, but I think it's good to ask the questions. Lori and I see your thought, your hand.
Yeah, Natty, just to piggyback on what you had said, I know with Superintendent Stenvik being new in this role as well, and maybe Don's got some history on that, this question, good question. And I know it's one I've asked in the past, and I think that there's some documentation that was gathered previously to help answer some of what Mary's asking. So I think it's definitely being a good steward of the dollars is, is a good question. And I think that, I just wanted to mention that, I'm sure Don has it, that there's some additional information that we pulled maybe two years ago, kind of about, about that too.
And as we researched it, we saw opportunities for connection, exposure to the, the national conference, which was, was valuable for me this year, and lobbying. It's essentially being part of the, you know, the, the, what, what are we saying to the federal government collectively? So this will come back as an action item. We'll vote on this. So if you have any additional questions, you can direct those at Superintendent Stenvik, and she'll get you any information that you might need. Any other discussion? All right, we will move on to the National School Board Association Annual Conference. And this is the time where if board members are ready and willing, able to share at least a little bit of what they took away from the Virtual National School Board Association. What was kind of neat, not kind of, which was neat, was that more of us were able to attend because of the electronic version. Normally it's limited to two board members because there's travel and hotel expenses and all of the things that cost a lot of money, which were kind of stripped away. And honestly, it was very convenient to sit in my kitchen and watch this. So I thought, those who are, who are, can I get a, get a raise of hands from folks who are desirous to share tonight? Mary? Right now, I can also share. All right. So Mary, how about you lead us off?
Oh, good. I attended sort of, as Laura had said, we talked after, after one of the classes. She said, oh, you attended the sampler, because I sort of, I didn't stick with any one train of learning. I sort of went around, and so I wanted to get some things about racism and, you know, does, you know, systemic racism in our schools and how it presents and what people are doing about it. And I also wanted to find out more about education policy and reform and funding. And so I sort of, and mental health in schools, so I sort of jumped around. I think for me, in the very beginning, Leslie Odom Jr. was part of it, and he was the keynote speaker. And he said, you know, diversity should go beyond window dressings, which I thought was really interesting and especially thinking about the work that we're doing on equity as a school board and as a district and as a larger community and, you know, within the state and sort of all of these different areas that we're talking about it. So I thought that that was really an interesting and important quote to sort of lead everything off. The funding was interesting, again, thinking about the federal government not really ever investing in our schools and saying, putting out mandates that they're not funding. At the, one of the quotes was, "The federal government has only ever funded IDEA at 14% when they promised 40." And I think as we are looking at budgets and like every other school district in nearly the country is looking at it too, we can see where all of that, you know, additional funding could come in handy and support our students and our staff and our communities. So I think that that's, it was important to, again, get that really hard statistic to be able to say as we're talking to community members, as we're talking to our legislators, I think that that's really important. I think I, some of the mental health stuff, as a, as a clinician, it was frustrating to hear some of it. Sort of bandied about diagnosing and, or diagnoses and the, some of the screenings that are used and sort of wanting more clarity and more clarity for the people listening. That's all, that was sort of frustrating, but also there's some, there's some surveys that I have been meaning to follow up with Superintendent Stenvik about. Anyway. And then also just, again, that forecasting on what we can expect for funding and what we should be asking for and how we can continue to talk to our legislators, both local and federal, to try and help get funding for these mandates. And I mean, ideally get 40%, but my gosh, if we could even get 20, like what we could do with an additional 6% of funding, I think would be really fantastic. So that was sort of my takeaway, like a hodgepodge of different things. But felt like it was pretty, pretty spot-on to try and get a little bit out of, out of all those different areas, especially as a newer member. So again, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity to have been able to attend.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. There, it was fun to, not fun, I mean, it was, some of it was fun. You know, some of it's learning, but it's awesome that you got to be able to do that. but it's awesome that you got to be able to do that as a new board member. Normally, that's not the case where you get elected and boom, you're off to the races. It has to fall in just the right year. So it was a pretty nice opportunity. I guess I'll share my takeaways. I did find just a few random products that I was roving through some of the vendor sites. I am one of those people who does like weird trade booths and just kind of roam around in real life space, so I'm like, well, I'll try this virtually. And I actually stumbled on a couple of interesting things that I passed on to Superintendent Stenvik. I just went to their websites and I was able to share those with her. So we'll see if any of those pan out, but it's kind of fun to dream and see what, including, like, some really neat chairs for wiggly kids, and I happen to relate well with wiggly kids, and these chairs were pretty cool. And I said, they may cost a fortune, so just disregard this, but I know it's, chair ordering is definitely management, though, so I'm just gonna leave that in your hands, but I thought they were cool, so, you know, just definitely a management decision. But it was fun to be able to pass those along and see, I would never hear about chairs in schools, so that was fun. I went to a Meaningful Youth Engagement seminar or session put on by the Association of Alaska School Boards, Association of Alaska School Boards, that's kind of hard to say. And that was interesting, and it talked about, just obviously, the name, Meaningful Youth Engagement, and you never know what you're gonna get when you hop into an NSBA session, and this was one I really enjoyed. They have a different kind of school niche, like, they were talking about schools where kids were flying in for school, you know, using planes, and I was like, well, okay, our tiny little district doesn't have that problem. So if we think our busing's expensive, I guess, wowzer. But this is where I kind of came away with, and I mentioned it briefly during the other of a school board meeting afterwards, but considering having some sort of youth person on our school board and judging from their level of engagement with their youth, their boards meet less frequently than ours, I think it would be a lot to ask a student to come to five, you know, potentially three meetings a month with all the other things that students are doing. But maybe starting simple, and one of the ideas I threw out there was potentially having a student member of our community engagement committee or our policy subcommittee. So I'm just gonna throw that out and maybe add a potential meeting in the future where we want to discuss that. What could that look like? Is that something we'd be interested in thinking about for an upcoming year? I know Member Palmer had suggested it, man, like, a few years back. It didn't get traction then, but sorry, it took the Alaskan School Board Association to open my eyes, but I'm gonna give more than partial credit to Member Palmer on that one.
We were a little busy a few years back, too.
We had some other things on the table then. I passed on some information on, from a session called Turning Your Principles Into Strategic Talent Leaders, some interesting information, and I tried to soak in a lot of it, and it was kind of, it was definitely a management thing, and a lot of the, like, language was very coded, language that was not in my lexicon, so I did also pass that on to Superintendent Stenvik as another management, you know, hands-off. This is your department, but gave it to her, so it was interesting to hear about that and fun to think of leadership development in that way. I work in leadership development in my vocational life, and so it's always fun to think of, how do we have leaders who lead other people in leadership development? And it's very exciting for me to hear and really think about in our school system for, on behalf of the teachers, staff, and other people in the building, and using that principle as that hub, that's very exciting for me personally. I did give to some equity, a couple equity-related seminars, and I was grateful that they were talking about equity, but also, now that we've met with Dr. Muhammad, super thankful for that, because the amount of learning I am having is just so much greater, talking with him, it's worth, for me, it's been totally worth the money compared to what I heard about equity at the conference, which was not a lot of new. It's, of course, great to continue to hear the same messaging and keep it fresh, make sure my mind is on equity, but man, I've been so challenged in our time with Dr. Muhammad. More on that, that'll come at a work session, we're gonna have to debrief in a work session, but really great. And then I shared more in depth at the previous school board meeting about the website stuff. I directed you to the Wisconsin, I don't remember, if you remember that Wisconsin School Board's webpage, Sun Prairie, thank you. And some of the main takeaways were adding information to our board page and creating an equity statement for us, and some of the things on the board page that they had that I thought were interesting is even things like, what is the role of a school board member? It's not, you know, you don't know until you're on a school board what a school board member does. Could it be a 60-second video that says, this is what a school board member does? Hey, something like that, to help the public informed on what they can expect from us and how they can contact us and different things like that. So, those are kind of my main, I had a couple of takeaways there with the youth engagement and then the equity statement that I think that are in the vision and governance end, on our end of the deal. So hopefully seeing those come back up, if we can get around to them in other meetings. Would people have interest in putting those two items on potential future?
Yes.
Okay, seeing head nods. Okay. And then hopefully we can hear, Laura and Molly also attended, correct? Hopefully we can hear from y'all at a later date.
Yes.
If there, especially if there are action items, we want to, you're like, hey, let's talk about engaging on this, or find me and we can put them on the agenda as discussion items. So, all right. Any other questions from any other members or comments? All right, we will move on to our one action item for the evening, and I want to thank Director Stunkel, oh, that was hard to say tonight, for joining us. Thanks for hanging in there with us. We did talk about this last week, but I'll kick it over to Director Stunkel.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, I'm here this evening seeking approval to increase the fees for our Adventure Club and Mini Adventure program by 2%, beginning with the school year of 2021, 2021, '22. So it would start right after Labor Day. The need for increasing these fees is because of increasing staffing costs and food costs. So, a reminder again, as I mentioned when I presented on May 11th, that Adventure Club and Mini Adventures are programs that must be self-sustaining. So our fees always are aligned to exactly our costs. We really try to keep our increases as absolutely low as possible, but there aren't other funding streams to pay for childcare, and so that's really what we, why we have to request annually, typically, an increase in the fees. So this evening, I'm here requesting a 2% increase for the fees for Adventure Club and Mini Adventures. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Again, that motion was to approve the increasing of participation fees for Adventure Club and Mini Adventure programs. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
Palmer, so moved.
Thanks, Laura. Second?
Grandlin, second.
Thank you. Discussion on that. Laura.
For clarification, it looked like, as far as the raising of the fees, it was like 50 cents to a dollar, depending upon the particular program. Am I correct about that?
Yes, you are correct about that.
Okay, thank you.
So per day, it's about a 50 cent to a dollar increase. A dollar is when it's the summer program, so it's a longer day.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, we will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Grandlin. Aye. Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll move on to board topics, and I will start us off with some interesting new information that our very own Don Hoyam told me, so I'm asking for, as boards are, you know, as we're looking toward end of pandemic, not pandemic necessarily, but end of restrictions and regulations and emergency orders related to the pandemic, our most current emergency order, executive order, right, from the governor ends on July 14th. So the meeting law that we're meeting under for the emergency stuff will, if it's not extended, expire on July 14th, and then we will be required to meet in person as a board or by electronic means. We did get clarity on what that means. An electronic means can't be, it's got to, we've got to go back to the old rules of posting the location any board member would be meeting from for those electronic means. So if you're meeting for some reason from another location, that address has to be available to the public, and then it has to be open and accessible to the public, and there must be three days' notice for who, where, and each location is open to the public. And as a caveat to that, each board member is only allowed to do that three times in any year. So, that's not, you can't perpetually, you know, meet from home according to the guidelines. Now, here's the complicated thing, and we ran into it tonight, so there was, we almost ran into it tonight, but upon clarification, the, kind of the rules for us meeting here, and this is only when the governor declares that there's a health pandemic or emergency, so that's what we're functioning on now, and that's the notice I actually read at the beginning of the meeting, if people weren't tuned to that, is that at least one person needs to be physically present in this space for us to do that. So at times, it's been just Xena, thank you, Xena. Roll call votes, as we've been doing, are required, so thank you. Molly used to do it, now Laura, so thank you for all the names called over the last 15 months. And special rule, we can't have a quorum in this room. So the most board members, if we're functioning under that meeting law now for the electronic, what's the, the emergency meeting rule, we cannot have a quorum present. And if we have a quorum present, then nobody can come in electronically, because we're now, we're having a quorum in-person meeting. And as a special thing, if we meet once as a quorum in this building, which we could have done tonight, I think, then we're no longer able to function under that emergency order at all.
Ever again?
Yeah. So it's a tricky, tricky situation that I think a lot of boards, and I just wanted to put that out there so the public can hear it, and so we, as a board, can, you know, have a discussion as we move forward. So I think moving forward, we have to see that, you know, there's a likely, I would say, anticipating a sunset on the executive emergency order of July 14th. But in the meantime, I think my recommendation to board members would be highly communicative with Don Hoyam about if you're going to be present or not. And then she can, if we run into having more than three board members wanting to be present here, we could either rotate or maybe at our next work session have a discussion about, you know, if we all feel comfortable returning to being present for the meeting sooner than July 14th.
I mean, yeah, or I guess the alternative would be that Dawn would put all of her names into a random generator online and, like, that's the person that has to stick out.
Right. If we all do feel safe and able, we could begin meeting again, but that then rules out the opportunity, if somebody were to have an exposure who needs to quarantine, they would not have that ability. So it seems maybe as long as we're under the executive order, if somebody were to contract COVID or have, need to quarantine for any reason, they would still be able to participate, but that's all, you know, that's on the back of my mind.
Yep. And the rules for quarantine are different now if you're vaccinated versus unvaccinated, which is like a whole nother wrench in the works.
Yep. Molly, I see you unmuted there, Molly.
Sorry, Molly.
No, I was just gonna state the same thing, actually, and just, you know, not wanting anyone to feel uncomfortable if they aren't ready, just with, you know, some of the different information we're hearing, things of that nature. And so I would just encourage us to stay this way. I'm comfortable staying, you know, virtually, I don't mind doing them, and doing everything work-related virtually, too, so this is fair enough for me. I'm just gonna throw that out there, like, I don't mind being one of the people that stays home. I miss you guys, don't get me wrong, but it works out, so.
Yep. Laura?
Yeah, I do actually have a question here, and I guess this would be post-July. Are we still going to have the public have access via Zoom? Could we still Zoom our meetings out? Because generally speaking, then the public needs to have access, they can come here, but to be able to actually, you know, we really don't want to pack the room even just coming out of the pandemic, too. I'm just saying.
I didn't have any inclination to remove the live broadcast. Superintendent Stenvik and I haven't discussed that, though. I'd be open to thoughts from board members.
Yeah, I think we should keep, that was also gonna be one of the things that I brought up, too. One of the things that the pandemic has highlighted, I think, is the, how inaccessible our pre-pandemic world was for a lot of people, and I think that providing this livestream is really important for families and for caregivers and students as well. And I know it does go on YouTube the next day, but sometimes it can be really hard to access it the next day for lots of different reasons, too. And then, you know, the day gets away from you, and then you've missed the meeting. So I really do think that there's some benefit to continuing this.
I see Lori and's hand is raised.
Yeah, just real quick, kind of to piggyback on what Mary said, sorry, it just got really windy here, I hope that doesn't pick up on the microphone. I don't want to take steps backwards in terms of how we can provide access to our constituents, to our community, to our community members. And so I think as we've talked, we've learned a lot and have made a lot of strides during COVID, kind of finding the good and the bad, and having livestreamed meetings is very important to me.
Randomly, I think that that is the first time I've heard small children laughing together in a really long time outside, and it was very heartwarming at the end of what you had to say, just.
It's ironic that you're telling people how heartwarming it is to be down here when we're telling them, only three of us can be here at a time. Some little kids just rode by on their bikes, and they were adorable and giggling. Well, you know, that's why we're open to, like, maybe rotating, so other people can experience that, too, right? Okay. Any other, do you have something to add?
I was just gonna, I can certainly.
Oh, sorry, can I have Superintendent Stenvik first and then you, Molly?
Absolutely.
I was just gonna add, thank you, that I can provide information, accurate information in the next communication to the board. My understanding is that we have a multi-year subscription to our current livestream capability, and so it's not something that was a purchase that would end as the pandemic is winding down. That's my understanding, and I can certainly provide accurate information from Director Hennigan's.
Thank you, appreciate that. Molly, sorry about that.
No, that's okay, and actually, that's exactly what I was gonna say, is I remember asking about this several months ago, and I remember Director Hennigan saying that it was available for a long-time-use type situation. So I fully support that, and I think that, you know, as, I think we need to, quite frankly, so I'm hopeful that we will.
All right, thanks, everyone, for your input on that, and we'll get back to you with more information on our contract. I want to say it was, I'm not even gonna guess, I'll say it, but I haven't, I'm not gonna say it. I have a guess, I think I might remember.
Multi-year.
Multi-year, multi-year is excellent. Are there any, if I circle back to the remote meetings during the pandemic versus in-person board meetings via remote, those are the titles, and they're on this sheet, Dawn gave me in huge red font, and I was just ignoring them. So remote meetings during a pandemic and then in-person with a board member that's remote are two different things according to Minnesota State statute. All right, is everyone, is everyone clear on the difference between those two? Special shout-out to Don Hoyam for all her research and consulting with the Minnesota School Board Association, and this is, when those dues come back up, let's remember these moments, for helping us interpret some very complicated Minnesota statutes. So thank you, Don. Any more board topics? Laura?
I believe the Expressions Art Show is going on. I believe that is this week. Does it end on Friday or Thursday?
Is that back at Silverwood?
Silverwood.
Yep, awesome.
Yep. I think it's, I did think it ends Friday. So as all, every year, I haven't been there yet, I am going to go tomorrow. And probably again on Thursday. Our students are incredibly talented and with the guidance that they, that they get from our, our art staff, I mean, it just, it is definitely, get out there and see, I mean, you will not believe the level of maturity that there is in the art that's presented there. And, and it's, and it's a, and it's a beautiful location too over at Silverwood. So I definitely recommend getting out and enjoying all the, all the wonderful, creative, inspiring work that's there.
Thanks, Laura. More board topics. All right, hearing none, I will adjourn our meeting at eight fourteen.